Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wierig.
Here.
And we'll fix this reverb one moment.
It sounds like a scary movie. We have a quorum. The approval of the, pardon me, the Pledge of Allegiance. James, you'll direct that from your end with the flag.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay. And hopefully you can see the flag there. Okay, right hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance, keep the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. Approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda that anyone would like to request?
No.
Approved.
Hearing none, okay, and without objection, the agenda will be approved. Okay, our first item is a presentation by the Clean Power Alliance. And James, who do we have? Is it Karen Schmidt that's going to do that or Matthew?
Yes, and are they in the room? Okay, yeah, we're bringing them into the room now. And it's going to be Karen Schmidt and Matthew Langer.
And this is at the request originally of Councilman Haney, but all the council were interested in getting an update and be able to ask a few questions of policy and comparisons with the private utilities. So if we're all on board, I don't know. Karen, are you leading off or is it Matthew?
I will.
Mayor Johnston, yeah. Yeah, sorry. Matt will be leading the presentation and I'll be here and available to answer questions as needed.
Okay, you'll chime in, the duet? Okay, good. Matt, the floor is yours.
Great, and I think we had a presentation that someone was going to be able to share for us on the screen here.
Yeah, we're queuing it up now, and here it is. Give me one second, I have too many things open.
It went away.
Well, while you're getting started, I'll just start by saying thanks for having us here to talk about Clean Power Alliance. Sorry, I can't be there in person. I was just a little over a month ago able to visit Ojai for the first time and Karen showed me around. Because I think as most of you know, Karen Schmidt, who's our Regional Affairs Manager, is also an Ojai resident. So beautiful town, hope to make it back soon.
We hope we're all here in person the next time you get to come to town.
Yeah, me too.
Actually, we didn't know Karen lived here, I didn't know that.
You didn't?
I hope Karen didn't mind me sharing that, so.
No, I live right here in the city, near downtown.
Great, so thanks, everybody. It looks like we have the presentation up, so I'll jump right in. So who is Clean Power Alliance? Clean Power Alliance is a publicly formed entity through a joint powers authority, and we're made up of 32 public agencies across Southern California, including the city of Ojai and six other cities in Ventura County and unincorporated, the county and the unincorporated portions of Ventura County. And then the rest of the members are scattered throughout Los Angeles County, including unincorporated LA County. But you can see all the different logos for the cities. When you have some time, it's fun to look through some of those. Next slide, please. Yeah, no problem. Keeps jumping. Yeah. Okay, so there's just a map that kind of summarizes. You can see where the different member cities are, our 32 members. But we have a million customer accounts that we serve, representing about 3 million residents and businesses. And the city of Ojai itself has 3,546 residential and commercial customers who we serve. Next slide, please. So I'll talk a little bit more about CCA in general coming up and how it works. But you can see that really, basically, back in the 2000s, coming out of the energy crisis, the state created an option for cities to band together to procure their own power. The first group of cities to do that were in Marin County. And so they formed Marin Clean Energy in 2010. And Sonoma Clean Power was the next one and kind of accelerated from there. Clean Power Alliance formed in 2018. And we started by serving unincorporated LA County and two other cities in LA County. And then we began serving Ojai and the rest of the residential customers across 32 cities in 2019, February and May. So we can go ahead and jump to the next one, can see all over the state. So how does it work? So Clean Power Alliance, as a local government entity, we purchase the power that actually serves your home. And it is delivered through the existing Edison infrastructure. And so the way it works is you still get one bill. Edison charges you for the electric distribution and transmission infrastructure, and we charge you for the electricity and we make those purchases in the power markets. And we'll get into a little bit more about some of those details. But that's just the really, the simple way it works. We're able to offer customers a unique energy mix compared to what Edison offers. And that mix of energy, we'll talk about the different choices you have. But an important thing to emphasize is because its community is getting together to decide what type of energy mix they want, that's going to look a lot different than Edison, who serves 6 million customers across 40,000 square miles, a much more vast area, and answers to a different kind of regulatory structure. So because we are run by our communities, we're able to have different product offerings that meet the needs of those communities. The next slide, please. One too far. There you go. So speaking of the different product offerings, we have, Clean Power Alliance has three rate options. And really, the difference amongst the three is the price point and how much clean energy you get in each product. So we have lean, clean, and 100% green. The lean power product provides 36 renewable energy, and it's designed to be really the value product. So you're getting a little bit better, a little bit cleaner energy, a little higher renewable energy content than Southern California Edison, and you're getting a 1% to 2% discount compared to Edison's base rate. And that's what that product offers. For our next product is clean power. That's 50% renewable energy. So that's definitely more than what SCE offers in their base product, but it includes more renewable energy, 50%. And then the last one's 100% green. That's all renewable energy as defined by a California law. So it's the cleanest product that's available. And that comes at a 7% to 9% premium compared to the basic Edison rate. And that's the default selection that Ojai has chosen. So each, one thing I'll note, you know, with our 32 members, each city has the opportunity to choose the default for its jurisdiction. So you could choose for your city lean, clean, or 100% green. And across our 32 jurisdictions, we've had, we have different jurisdictions who have chosen each of those. But Ojai is in good company. We have about 10 of the jurisdictions who've chosen 100% green. And so that's about 20% to 25% of our customers on 100% green power. Ojai is part of that, like I said. And that actually means that Clean Power Alliance serves more customers on 100% green energy than anywhere else in the country. It's a pretty big accomplishment early on for our organization and really great leadership at the local level with the number of communities who've made that choice. And really led, I'll just, I'll say led by Ventura County, which is disproportionately at 100% green. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our programs and what we do. But one of the things I'll highlight is that there are programs available to all customers that offer financial assistance for people in need. And when I say all customers, those are whether or not you're with Edison or Clean Power Alliance. And we like to highlight these programs because not everybody knows that they exist. And we also want to emphasize the point that even if you're a Clean Power Alliance customer, you don't lose access to those programs. You get the same equal access. But I will say we do go a little bit further, so I'll mention that. But the first I'll mention is the California alternative rates for energy. And that is a 30% overall bill discount for customers. And it's based on meeting income qualifications or public assistance requirements. Similarly, there's what we call FARA, the Family Electric Rate Assistance Program, that provides a 12% discount. And again, that's essentially based on public assistance and income qualifications. And the last one I'll mention is Medical Baseline. That's a program that's available for folks who have certain electrically powered devices, like ventilators, for example, or like oxygen machines in their home. And they have a certain amount of electricity they must use. You can get on Medical Baseline and that gives you a discount on what you pay for energy. So you do.
Excuse me, are these programs ran through you? It looks like they ran through Southern California Edison.
They're run for, you can stand aside. They're run through Southern California Edison. We do like to promote those programs though because they're available to our customers as well. And they're a really great benefit, they're paid for by everybody and people who are eligible on these programs, especially in tough times with everything that's going on with COVID and the economy. We really want people to be aware of those and something we jointly promote with SCE. So I want to highlight that. Another thing I'll mention that's an important part of the 100% green program that Ojai has defaulted on to is that for customers who are in one of these programs, they continue to pay the same price they paid before. So they'll pay the same rate that they would pay if they were on Edison's basic product or our clean product. So that parity pricing rate. But you still get their 100% green energy. So that's a program we've added. We didn't want to put cities in a choice, in a position where they had a trade off between going green and putting an extra burden on their disadvantaged customers. And so we have this program built in where essentially you're able to get that 100% green product without paying the extra premium if you're in one of these programs. So next slide, please. So let me talk about some of the accomplishments over the last couple of years. We've really done a lot for a new entity, serving a million customers across the state. And it would have been a lot, I think, just to get off the ground, but we've gone a lot further than just getting started. Right now, we're on track to meet California's mandates for renewable energy in 2020, 10 years ahead of schedule. So essentially, the state's requiring 60% renewables by 2030. We're going to have 60% renewables as a whole portfolio. Ojai is going to have 100%. But as a whole portfolio, we'll be at or above 60% this year, 10 years ahead of schedule. Like I mentioned, we have about a quarter million customers receiving 100% green power that makes us the largest provider of 100% clean energy, renewable energy in the country. We've signed 750 megawatts of new renewable energy and 288 megawatts of battery storage under long-term contracts with more coming. We're going to be bringing some more to our board for consideration next week. But that's a lot of new construction of clean energy and the storage, energy storage that we need to integrate that clean energy onto the grid. And that's capacity that might not have otherwise been added to the grid if not for Clean Power Alliance existing and communities like Ojai choosing to go for more and more green energy through 100% green rate. We've also adopted a five-year local program strategic plan aimed at investing $200 million in community needs and priorities. And that includes some programs around distributed energy resources like batteries and storage at people's homes and at businesses and in communities. And those are things that we were piloting already. And some of those pilots were actually able to be deployed in the week, last week and the week before, when we've had some strain on the grid just due to the heat and resource availability. We're already able to make a contribution by activating those programs. We've also launched a $150,000 Community College STEM Scholarship Program. So those are just a couple highlights of what we're doing. But you can see that, you know, a couple of the big themes here are cleaner energy, making a big impact for the environment through greening the grid, and then also a big focus on community. And so there's a lot of opportunities for customers to get involved. And obviously, as the council here, you have your own voice on our board because, you know, every member has a seat on the Clean Power Alliance Board of Directors. Next slide, please. So let me talk a little bit about the impact of Ojai's 100% green power. So last year's Ojai residents and businesses purchased 23 million kilowatt hours of electricity from Clean Power Alliance. 95% of this was 100% green. That's all renewable energy, carbon free with zero greenhouse gas emissions. The reason it's not 100% is because everyone who enrolls in Clean Power Alliance is defaulted into a certain rate, but can choose to opt to a different rate. So if 100% green rate and the premium price that comes with it isn't right for a particular customer, they can choose either our clean or lean product, the product that matches their individual values and choices and budget and all of those considerations. But that's still, you know, a huge percentage of the community receiving 100% green power. By choosing 100% green power, Ojai has reduced its GHG emissions by more than 5,000 metric tons in less than one year. So it's pretty impressive. I know Ojai is a small community, but it's a pretty big difference you've been able to make by not just being part of Clean Power Alliance, but choosing to be at 100% green. So this is equivalent to taking almost 1,100 passenger cars off the road for one year, eliminating electricity consumed by 857 homes in one year, or planting almost 84,000 trees and growing them for 10 years. So if you think about like all the effort that could go into a lot of other ways to mitigate GHG emissions, and I'm sure Ojai is focused on a lot of other things as well, not just what we're doing with Clean Power Alliance, but it's a pretty, pretty great way to make a big difference with one action.
Matt, can I ask one question?
Yeah, absolutely.
On that last bullet point where you had the three, are those, when it says equivalent to, are those additive? Or are those passenger cars or 857 homes or planting 83,000 trees? Or is it all of them?
Karen can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's either or, any one of those things. Yeah, just whatever resonates most with you.
That's right. This is based on the EPA calculator.
Okay.
Matt, I had one other question on this page too. Is so you're stating that we've reduced our emissions by 5,000 metric tons. Do you know what we started out with as far as our usage and how much tonnage we'd use in a year?
That's a great question, but so I think just on, Karen, if you have some notes on this, but I mean, because you went from Edison's base product to zero, like if we just ignore the 5% of people who are on something else, basically, it's like saying your total electric-related emissions were about 5,000 metric tons and now they're close to zero.
I would just, why I'm asking that is I just wonder how that would correlate into our air quality board, our recess board and the numbers and the calculations that they use to predict what our air quality is on a annual basis. And I would just think this is just additional information that might be used or applied, that's all.
Yeah, and we'd be happy to follow up with any more detailed information you need or anything that would help you with that. This is just isolating, you know, what I'm talking about, which is electric sector, electricity consumption-related emissions. Obviously, there's a lot of other emissions that happen in any community.
And that's not necessarily.
That's not necessarily, just Bill Wierig, Matthew, have a question? Can I ask a question, Matthew?
Yeah, by all means.
Yeah, these are savings for the planet, you know, California or the planet, wherever. This isn't emissions in our air shed, this is emissions overall, as opposed to where the electricity is generated one way or another, correct?
That's right, but I will, and this may be the same as what you're saying, but I just want to clarify, these are the incremental related to Ojai's usage. The emissions that were reduced could have been from anywhere. It could have been a power plant anywhere.
It could be a power plant that was substituted for solar farm out in the Mojave Desert, for example.
Right, right. It's not necessarily that there was a power plant in Ojai that we shut down.
Can I add just real quick too? I was thinking, I wanted to give some credit to the city and the city council on this because I think, you know, from being part of the early discussions, Ojai was one of the first that did go 100% green power. So I think the true impact is actually, you know, that we got some other cities that are much larger than us to also do the 100% clean power, which is, you know, exponential.
Well, Matthew, I'll also on top of this, you know, there's a discussion going on right now in the community regarding looking at greenhouse emissions, greenhouse gas emissions as a countywide issue. And again, if we have six cities out of 10, if we can go back to any of those other cities or communities and clearly demonstrate the benefits of what we've done and what a lot of other cities are doing, and we start looking at our communities and climate change and all of this in a broader range and a broader spectrum, I think it's going to be beneficial. We're, again, we have, as a county, we always have, I think there's a tendency just to protect our own rather than creating an environment where we're all in it. All 10 cities are in this together. And imagine the air quality changes that we could have if we all participated in this. And imagine all of the additional savings that we might have if we all participated in this. So there's a lot to be said about starting out and where we are, but where we need to go is important also. So I appreciate the facts and the information.
Mayor, I have a question for Matthew too, another one. Matthew, and since we're talking about discussion in the community, I've gotten a lot of questions after what appears to be Edison's attempt to counter your success with their publicity. And so now they're talking about 100% renewable Edison as well in some of their publicity. And I might as well just ask you, what is the difference between your 100% renewable program and what Edison is calling its 100% renewable program?
I'm glad you asked, and I'll assure everyone else that question wasn't a plant. If you want to go to the next slide.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's the next slide. Great question, thanks for asking. So yeah, let me talk about, SCE has something called the Green Rate Program. And it's a bit different. It's a little bit of an apples and oranges comparison with CPA's rate products. But I'll just acknowledge, I know there's been a number of questions about this because we do an annual joint mailer with Southern California Edison. And it's meant to be a comparison between our rate products and their rate products. And that's evolved over time. And it's a regulatory requirement that we have to do. And, you know, in some ways, it's informative to customers, but in other ways, it can be a little bit confusing. So that's why we have this slide here to talk about that. And so I think just at a high level, before I even jump into the slide, we have just a totally different model than what Edison's doing. Edison puts all of its customers on the same default rate, regardless of what city they're in. And then they have these other, what I would call, describe as boutique rate offerings that are regulatory mandated programs that require them to buy renewable energy from certain sources and make those available to customers as a separate rate. So that's one kind of way of doing things. What we're doing is we're building our whole organization around providing greater levels of renewable energy to whole communities. And then entire communities are moving en masse to our product. We're still offering choices so people can move amongst those products. People can also move back to Southern California Edison if that's what they prefer. But it's just a different thing. Our rate offerings are available to all customers. You can move in and out of those programs, excuse me, in and out of those rate products at any time. And we're sourcing those from a diverse portfolio of resources that's really built to last. It's who we are. So that's just kind of a high-level description of what the two programs are. So I'll talk a little bit about availability. So the way Edison's program is structured is they're buying solar power and they're selling you solar power for 50 or 100% of your usage. But it's a limited program. They only procure, they're only allowed to procure up to 269 megawatts of solar energy for this program. So once that program's subscribed, it's done, no one else can join. To give you an idea, I mentioned earlier, we have about 250,000 customers in our 100% green program, and we have no participation cap. So if everyone continued to, like, we have some cities this year that are actually moving up to 100% green in the fall, Sierra Madre and Malibu. If everyone eventually wanted to move to 100% green, we would make that happen. Edison's limited in their program participation. But the folks that we already have on our 100% green product would exceed Edison's cap. So if everyone just went back to Edison and wanted to stay 100% green, they'd break Edison's program. There wouldn't be enough power to supply that demand. So current participation levels, I mentioned that we have about a quarter million customers on 100% green. We also have another half a million or so on the clean power 50% renewable energy product. Between Edison's 50 and 100% rate, they have 500 to 1,000 customers. So when I say it's a boutique program, I mean, you're talking about out of 6 million people, they have maybe 1,000 people participating in those rates. So I think that's helpful to understand.
Ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Am I unmuted? I guess so. So Edison is a private company. You are, Clean Power Alliance is a public company, correct?
That's right.
Okay, now can Edison, it almost seems like Edison's trying to confuse us with their rate. They can change, can they legally change their rates and what appears to be more affordable? Can they change it to something else without notifying the customers that sign up for their green program? Can they change the rates of their green rate program?
They can change the rates and they do change the rates from time to time. And I'll talk a little bit about some of how that works. But I will say Edison's also heavily regulated by the Public Utilities Commission. So I don't want to imply anything sinister in what they do. But it's very different than what we do and it's frankly, pretty arcane. You know, we have a, like, when we have a rate change, it's on the agenda at our board meeting. Anyone these days can call into the board meeting. Or, you know, when we're not in COVID times, we have remote locations in Ventura County that people can come and participate in our public meetings. And these rates are discussed and we try to make them understandable and transparent. Edison's process kind of works through some complicated formulas and that is also goes through approval processes at the Public Utilities Commission in San Francisco, where it's just harder for people to participate. And, you know, if you go to the Public Utilities Commission, they're dealing with railroads and hot air balloons and all sorts of stuff. So it's a little bit different. But I can, let me address the cost a little bit and that might help answer your question as well. So Edison has a formula for how they calculate the cost of their green rates. And it's based on procurement costs and marketing costs and a number of different things. And then that formula spits out rates, essentially. It's essentially cost-based for them. And then they also pay the PCI, which you may have heard of if you've followed anything with Clean Power Alliance and CCAs over the last couple of years. But that's the exit fee for customers who leave the utility. So interestingly, if you stay with Edison but join their green rate, you pay the exit fee like you left Edison. And as we've experienced, there's a lot of volatility in the PCI, in the exit fee. So what happens with Edison's rates is you take your exit fee and you take your, and you take your renewable rate, which varies a lot based on these inputs that Edison has in their procurement, and you end up with a rate. Now Edison doesn't make any promise or warranty as to how that rate's going to compare to their base rate. And so if you saw the mailer, one of the things, for some of the rates that people got in the mailer, it actually showed that their 100% green rate was less expensive. got in the mailer, it actually showed that their 100% green rate was less expensive than their regular rate, which was, I think, confusing to some people.
Yeah, yeah.
We've since then looked at the rates and, and that, that exit fee changed, and now it's, it's more expensive than their base rate. So it moves around, they're, they're not aiming for a particular price, they're just, they're just turning the crank on a formula and, and a bunch of inputs, and they go through this process. What we're doing is, you know, I talked about on our rate slide, we're, we're offering 100% green energy at a 7 to 9% premium over Edison's base rate. So we're, we're looking at if the, if the exit fee goes up, then we'll, we actually lower our prices a little bit so that we can maintain ourselves within that range that we talk about. So we're trying to give our customers some predictability about what those rates are going to, what those rates are going to be in any given year, and, and the, the rates are going to have some logical connection. So your, your 36% rate is a little less expensive than your 50% rate, and then your 100% rate is the most expensive. And I think people, like, generally, generally get why that makes sense, and, you know, we, we would like to see those premiums, like, the premium for 100% green come down over time, but right now, the, the fact of the matter is, is it costs more money to have 100% clean energy than to have dirtier energy.
Matthew?
Yep.
Another question is, the, because you're using Southern California Edison's transmission lines for your energy, is it the state that's mandated a fixed cost on the use of those transmission lines, or is that something that you had to negotiate? And is that something that's not in the predictable cost methodology because of the uncertainty of that? Or are you locked into a true rate for a long period of time?
So basically, the way it works is, if you, if you look at your bill, your, your Edison bill when you're a Clean Power Alliance customer, you'll have a page of your bill that's, that's dedicated to what they call delivery charges. So that's the, that's the wires and poles and transformers and, and the workers who maintain all of that stuff. Everyone pays the same rates for that regardless of whether or not you're a CPA customer or an Edison customer.
Okay.
And so that is all, to your question, that is all regulated by this, by the Public Utilities Commission, and people are on equal footing when it comes to those transmission and distribution rates. So we didn't have to negotiate anything special, it's all set up to kind of be a plug and play from that perspective.
Okay.
Just a couple more points on this slide, just comparing the two programs. Talk about financial viability for CPA, you know, our 100% green power product is, is priced effectively so that we recover our costs and, and bring everybody what we've promised them. According to Edison's filings, and I, I can't answer many questions about this just because I, I don't know all the details behind it, but they've said in their filings that their hundred, that their green rate programs are not recovering their costs. So prob, not a sustainable plan for the future if they're not recovering their costs for that program. And then as far as the future of the program, like I said,
Matt, before you leave the last one,
Yeah.
Did I understand you to say that Edison says they're not recovering, you know, their costs for the 100% green, is that correct?
That's what they've said in their, in their filings.
Okay, and so when most businesses do that, isn't that sometimes classified as a loss leader?
It is, although I'll say, when I talk about the program future, I say it's uncertain. Edison has said it, not in the context of, we want to run a loss leader to complete, compete with Clean Power Alliance. This program's essentially a regulatory mandate, they have to do it, and they've, they've at different times made the argument that maybe they shouldn't have to run these programs in their current form because, you know, they're shift, they might be shifting costs to other customers, or not recovering their costs. So, yeah, you could call it a loss leader, but I, I'll give, I'll, I'll say that their perspective on this is a little different where they're going.
Maybe not by design, but in effect, selling it for less than it costs them, that's a pretty poor for-profit business strategy, but not a bad one to get people in the door. Okay.
Yeah, well, and, but I guess it hasn't got that many people in the door because they have
Right. But it raises the question that we have to compare to, what, 500 to 1,000 customers, and we got 800,000. That's very educational, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So just finishing off this slide, you know, whereas the future of Edison's program's uncertain, like I said before, 100% green energy and our other rate products, they are who we are, they're why we exist, they're not going anywhere. I think if anything, you know, we're seeing a trend towards more people on 100% green product, more people on that clean product, and as the state moves to cleaner and cleaner over time, that 50% rate someday is going to go above 50% and, you know, be cleaner and cleaner there. So on to the last slide.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation, I guess now we'll go to the council and we'll start, Randy, would you like to start? Do you have any questions you haven't had a chance to ask yet?
No, no, thank you, Mayor, for putting this on the, the agenda though, but you, remember, the reason that I brought it up was the fact that we, everyone in the community had received that flyer from Southern California Edison stating that they were equal to or better than Green Power. So it was great to bring Green Power on and let them explain away, explain away the differences. I come away with a lot more knowledge and a lot more insight as to the benefits of this, and again, I just would like to think about how we can share this countywide and let other entities realize that, that this is a win, and it's a short-term and a long-term win.
Thank you. Bill? You're muted, Bill.
In terms of the cost per whatever capacity unit is appropriate to state for battery storage, is that cost stable, falling, going up? And are the economies of scale so pronounced for that that you really can't distribute it, it has to be in large-scale installations?
So the question's around just the cost of renewables and battery storage?
Yeah, the cost, I mean, there's obviously a fully amortized cost per capacity unit, battery life, there's the installation cost, is that cost going down per, per capacity unit for battery storage, or is it stable? And also are the economies of scale so pronounced that it's only makes sense in really large-scale operations as opposed to distributed operations, or there'd be less, you know, transmission losses for using battery storage?
Yeah, great, great question. So a couple of points on that, so first of all, on, on the price, you know, we've seen over the last 10 years, the cost of renewables, both wind and solar in particular, but especially solar, come down really dramatically, you know, 90, 95%. We're also seeing the, the cost of, but I, I'd say at this point, it's somewhat more stable. At this point, we're seeing trends of declining cost for energy storage as well, but at least so far, not quite as dramatically as what we saw for a few years with, with solar. So costs are coming down, it's definitely becoming more cost-effective at, at the large scale. We were, there's also a place for, for local, for local generation and storage, both behind the customer meter, so at people's homes and businesses, and then just also, you know, built closer to load. And there are differences in costs, and, and there's definitely economies of scale for the larger facilities, but that doesn't mean that it never makes sense to do the local stuff, and in fact, we're really, we're really encouraging it because there can be a lot of value. And in, in that case, you're providing sometimes direct value to customers in terms of saving on their electric bill by having self-generation, but then also benefits to the grid and benefits to, to other customers by having that generation. So there, there's definitely a place for, for both the distributed customer-owned generation and, and storage alongside the, the larger-scale generation that we procure.
So that's sort of a developing story, okay.
Okay, Susa, you, would you, do you have any questions? You're muted, you're muted.
I'm trying to keep my dogs quiet.
Okay, you did a good job. You're muted again.
That's because I have nothing to say.
Oh, okay, good, thank you. Ryan, are you out there? Ryan?
I, I was not trying to say anything, thank you.
Oh, okay, well, thank you, okay. Well, Matt, I only have one question for you, and it's, I don't know if it's timely anymore, but one of the big questions and criticisms that some people made of going to the, the Clean Power Program versus, you know, public nonprofit versus the utility and privately-owned was, we as a utility pay dividends to our stockholders, we as a utility pay taxes, and you guys don't, so you should, you know, if you're going to do this, you should do it, you know, much cheaper. But being on the board of the CPA, I have learned that there are a lot of unforeseen upfront costs that, in transition. Could you touch on any of those as to where the money went to start with and the reason why, you know, we didn't just suddenly slash rates to be, you know, more cost, I don't know, competitive?
Yeah, great, great question, and I'd say there's, there's a lot of pieces to that. But, but really, yes, getting started is a, is a big, is a big undertaking. Building any new organization from scratch is going to have some upfront investment associated with it, and one of the things that we have to do, because we're operating in a commodity market for power, is we need to build up reserves, just like the city has reserves and really any other government agency, private entity, any, any operating entity, and I didn't mention a thing, I'm the chief operating officer at, at Clean Power Alliance, since I, I worry about these things a lot, you know, getting our systems in place and, and all those different pieces. And one of the things we have to do is build up those reserves over time, and as we build up reserves, it'll improve our creditworthiness, and that'll allow us access to lower-priced power, it'll free up money that we have posted in, in collateral for certain transactions, and allow us to access more markets with even more cost-effective power. And I, I think we've done a great job of, of, of remaining competitive, but, you know, once we reach a certain point with our reserves and our financial position, then we'll have that money that we've been clawing into reserves, is, we'll be able to either look at that for potential rate reduction, or we'll be able to invest that in our communities through energy-related programs in the future. So, you know, that's, those are some of the, those are probably, that's probably the biggest top-line consideration, but like I said, you know, I think we still manage to be competitive, we have our, our lean power product that is, is less costly than Edison for similar power content, so we've been able to accomplish that so far, and our, and, you know, 50% renewable energy product, clean power, where we're charging the same price as Edison but for more clean energy. And, you know, certainly at this point, there's a premium price for that 100% clean energy, but it's just been, you know, it, it's been great to have that offer, offering, and it's been excited to, exciting to see a lot of customers and, and communities jump on board that, you know, led by Ojai in, in a lot of ways. So, so those are a couple of, of the considerations around.
Is there anything else you and Karen would like to add before we move on with our agenda?
Yeah, just one more thing that I, I would be remiss to mention, which is, we have a COVID relief fund, our, our board of directors voted to establish a million dollars, and we have an option approved by the board to increase that fund. And so customers who sign up for a payment plan, or customers who join that, the CARE program that I mentioned, CAREFARA programs that I mentioned on a previous slide, they're eligible for a credit on their bill just for signing up. So you, if you want to participate in one of those programs, I have the information on those previous slides, hopefully that can be made available to the public, but you actually, you can just call up Edison's 800 number, you sign up through Edison, they provide that information to us, and we apply the credits directly on the bill, you don't have to, you don't have to do an extra step in that sense. So we know it's really difficult times for a lot of folks with everything that's happening with COVID, and, you know, we want to be doing our part to help the community with that, and so want to really point out that that's another benefit that Clean Power Alliance is offering to residents of Ojai and Ventura and LA counties.
Well, thank you very much for your time and for all the information, that's good to know more about what it is we're doing, and also to dispel the rumors that crop up, I'm sure during the election season, some of our members of the council are happy to have this kind of information to help them. So thank you all, and we'll now move to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is, what is it?
Thanks for having me, appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Do we have, we don't have any people signed up on public communication, but we've got several for some of the other items on the agenda. So let's go to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to accept it, or do you wish to pull anything from the consent?
Move to approve.
I can.
Okay, move in second. Any objections? If not, so ordered, okay? Let's go to discussion item number two, presentation of the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Arts Council. Is that Marcy?
And I'll just introduce, yeah, Marcy Toshner, the Chair of the Arts Commission is going to be doing the presentation. I'll just quickly introduce, we do our Lifetime Achievement in the Arts Award each year for the city, the Arts Commission vets several candidates and then makes a recommendation to council, and council ratifies that, and we did that this year, and ratified a few a couple months back. We were holding out to do the presentation when things opened up again, but it's been challenging, so we decided to try to do an electronic presentation, or a virtual presentation here, and I believe Marcy is on the, in the, in the meeting, let me confirm that, yep, I see her.
I'm here.
And I, do you want me to pull up the presentation?
I'll queue you when I want you to put it on.
Okay, got it, all right, and with that, I'm handing it over to Chair Toshner from the Arts Commission.
Thank you, James. As James mentioned, the Arts Commission voted unanimously, selected Gay Jones for the 2019 Lifetime Achievement in the Arts Award back in the good old days of 2019. We're finally able to officially present this award to Gay in the most unusual and unique way, and I want to personally thank Gay for her utmost patience and understanding about the delay. Tonight, I am sorry that Gay won't be able to experience all the smiles, congratulations, hugs, handshakes, that she would have under normal circumstances, but I urge all of Gay's friends, family and colleague, colleagues to reach out to her and offer congratulations as they deem appropriate. Here's a little bit about the Lifetime Achievement Award. The award was founded by the Arts Advisory Council, now the Ojai Arts Commission, in 1987 as an important tribute from the city council and citizens to Ojai artists who have enhanced our understanding and appreciation for the arts. The criteria for the award include proven continuous artistic excellence, demonstrated community involvement within the Ojai Valley, established recognition within their field, and residency within close proximity of the Ojai Valley. A recipient may be of any age. Gay now joins the accomplished, prominent, beloved ranks of previous award recipients. The recipients represent all facets of the art, including visual arts, performing arts, music, architecture, and supporters of the arts. Beatrice Wood was the first recipient in 1987, and over the years has included such luminaries as Vivica and Otto Heine, Bert Collins, Joan Kemper, Bill Wagner, Peter Strauss, Serge Aragonis, the Ojai Music Festival, Donna Granata, Kim Maxwell, Jim Clary, and Roger Conrad. Okay, James, if you wouldn't mind queuing up that PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, next slide. Next slide. Okay, so I looked at Gay's resume, these are a few things that were pulled from her resume, you can read them, but if we were to have included everything, it's four pages long, single-spaced, very impressive, and I don't think the mayor would be happy if I read the whole thing and kept you here all night, so leave it, someday maybe Gay will show you, but it's quite impressive, and it's all about teaching and writing and love of theater and performing, and really, really wonderful. Okay, thank you, next screen, James. Okay, and this was a, a production called A Year with a Frog and Toad. Gay directed this youth entertainment studio in conjunction with the Ojai Youth Entertainment Studio to the delight of audiences of all ages in 2015. Anna Kotula reminisced, this is a quote from Anna, "I first met Gay when my daughter Cory and my dad Trent and I were cast together in this production. She was the director of the show. We had the time of our lives with the help of Gay to bring our characters, which included Toad, the snail with the male, and the great and terrible frog, then the whole story to life. There were also lifetime friendships that formed in that theater experience, and others since. Gay cares a great deal for creating opportunities for intergenerational theater in our community of Ojai. This award is well-deserved. Thank you, Gay, and thank you, Ojai, for honoring her." This award is well-deserved. Thank you, Gaye, and thank you, Ojai, for honoring her." Next screen, James, thank you. In 2017, Gaye directed the hugely successful 25th Annual Putnam Counting Spelling Bee at the Ojai Arts Center Theater. Actress Denise Heller had this to say about Gaye. Quote, "I had the honor of working with Gaye in both the Addams Family and the 25th Annual Putnam Spelling Bee. Her ability to use multi-generations in her productions benefits everyone on so many levels. She is in constant education mode, allowing us to learn something new in every one of her shows. She is a pleasure to work with." Next screen, thanks, James. This is a picture, oh. What happened to It's a Wonderful Life? Oh, well, anyway, this.
There it is.
Okay, It's a Wonderful Life, and this was actually an adapted live radio production of Frank, Frank Capra's film, It's a Wonderful Life, quite unique. And the audience played as the audience would be in a live radio show. And then the next screen. This is Alice in Wonderland. You can see where various participants are, they're all different ages. Gaye not only teaches children, but she works with adults and she blends them nicely together in, in a single production as Anna Kotula mentions. It's a wonderful talent to have. So in short, Gaye Jones is a one-woman theatrical dynamo. We are blessed here at Ojai that she decided to make this valley her home and impart her love of theater and the performing arts to young and old alike through her directing, producing, writing, teaching, and acting. Gaye has contributed in innumerable ways to Ojai's theater scene, and I am most pleased and honored to present Gaye with this award on behalf of the Ojai Arts Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
With the miracle of technology, we have the award with Gaye here.
It was delivered by Louise. Thank you for this. It was wonderful. Special delivery.
Far like last year, so that's.
It's absolutely gorgeous. I so thank you. I hopefully again said, thank you, Marcy, for the nice introduction. And I'm looking at some of those pictures and in Wonderful Life, little Kelsey Hoy was like six years old and she's going, she's a freshman at UCLA this year. So we've been around a long time. It's never too late for all of you to join Ojai Arts Center Theater, particularly my Sage to Stage class, in which people of an older generation get to tell their life stories. So when it comes about, I'll just circulate it around. I, I feel so blessed to be among all of the recipients of this award. It's just great. And I honor and respect what you do at the city council. So please, when theater comes back, come join us. I know many of you are, are frequent, frequent audience members and, and the art gallery at the Art Center, but thank you so much, and I really appreciate this lovely award. There it is. Thank you.
Congratulations, Gaye.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, we are now to the response and update of the coronavirus. What news do you have for us?
Thank you. And we have one last presentation. No, no more presentations after this, I promise. Let me give a, share my screen real quick. Okay. Okay, so we, we have a brief update today. We just wanted to give an update on some of the occurrences over the last month or so, and the current statistics is what we'll start with. We've kind of decided to help kind of show the trends and how things are progressing. We started doing this kind of snapshot every meeting and we decided to start by showing just how the number of coronavirus cases in Ventura County and then particularly in the 93023 zip code have been progressing during this situation. In May of, or in May, at the end of May, we had six cases in Ojai. From the beginning, you know, it's, it's not six active cases, but we had, had, had six cases within Ojai at that time. 912 cases total. In June, a month later, we had 14 cases in Ojai, so pretty, you know, pretty slow growth there with 2,100 cases total. In July, it had gone from 14 to 29, so we're seeing, you know, this, it had been this trend of maybe doubling every month or so within the 93023, again, not active cases, but total cases. And the total cases in the county had gone up to 4,600 with the largest, that was in that, that surge period with, where we were seeing triple-digit increases. You know, 300 to 400 increases on some days. So, and then most recently, August 25th, you'll see a couple of things, which is that we're still seeing, you know, this 30-day, you know, double for the county. But one concerning thing here in Ojai is we did notice over this last month that there's been a, a bigger spike here in Ojai and also in Oakview. So it seems like it's the entire valley in the 92, 93023 and 93022 zip codes than we had had before. I think we're still an area that has had really good numbers so far and has, has really gone, I think everybody's gone above and beyond to try to mitigate the risk, but it's just something we're watching closely and trying to work with the county on to, to make sure that we're watching our, our numbers and not just, you know, the county numbers. So we did see an increase in total cases and in 93023 cases. But the positive news is from the July 14th, there's fewer people in the ICU and fewer people hospitalized countywide, which is a good trend. And then the number of testing, people tested is really, you know, keeps increasing pretty dramatically. So, you know, overall, it's kind of mixed news. The, the county-wide trend at this point is trending more positively. This, there's six key statistics that the state watches and the city had, or the county had spiked on all six of those and had landed on the state watch list, which I think we've all talked about at past meetings. I think the most recent meeting, we were on the watch list, which impacts the ability to open schools and things like that. We are now back off of the, or we're still on the watch list, but on five of the six measurements, we're back to a level that we would be off the watch list if we can get all six. So we, we have one stat left to try to improve, which is the case rate per 100,000 residents. And so if we can get that number down, we potentially could come off the watch list. And that would impact our ability to reopen. So we're making progress countywide. We need to keep watching and doing our part here to prevent a spike. I think the hard thing is we really have been a, a, an area that's done really well. But it's also important to remember that all it takes is, you know, a couple of spreaders that aren't using, you know, face coverings or aren't exercising distance, and all of a sudden we could see a big spike. So we, we just need to keep doing our part. And so just starting with kind of the overall statistics, the biggest regulations right now are the ones that had gone into effect July 13th, right before our last council meeting. And if you recall, it was that the state had ordered that all indoor operations of dine-in restaurants, movie theaters, family entertainment centers, zoos, museums, card rooms, and fitness centers, worship services, protests, offices for nonessential sectors, personal care services, hair salons, barber shops, and malls, all of those had to shut down indoor operations. So that was still the last really big change, and it's still in place at this point. And so we've been working hard over the last month to work with as many businesses as we can to modify them to do outdoor or pickup or, you know, try to find ways for them to, to be open under these restrictions. So hopefully we can make progress and, and get past the point where we have those restrictions, but those are still in place for the most part. And then the, since then, just a few minor recent updates, we, there really wasn't much. For the first time, we had a, you know, a month where there wasn't a lot of changes in this. But on August 6th, the state announced that youth sports could begin doing training and conditioning drills where there's no contact, but there can't be, you know, games or, or contact activities at this point, which we'll tie in later when we talk about some of our recreation programs that, that we're working with. And then August 13th, the county opened a mega COVID-19 testing site at the fairgrounds. There's been a lot of confusion about it because there was a pay testing site at the fairgrounds. So a lot of people still aren't using this testing site. They have short lines every day and, and they're trying to get the word out to get people there. So the county's asked us to really help get the word out, so that's what we're doing right now is that on the 13th, they opened up this, this mega testing site at the fairgrounds that is now available. And we'll have, later on in the presentation, we have the hours and dates that they're open as well. And then most recently, just last week, the county public health office announced that they are now accepting waivers for in-person instruction. They aren't issuing the waivers yet, but they're accepting applications from the schools because it's going to take at least two weeks for them to review and approve. So once somebody, once a school submits a waiver, there will be this 14-day period before it gets approved and can reopen. And as of now, my understanding is that there hasn't been anybody who's actually submitted one yet. So we're not, we're not in a position in the county where it looks like any schools are going to open up in person within the next two weeks. But they're accepting applications, so schools can apply to do that shortly thereafter.
Question, James? Two questions, my usual question. It just seems like the state has forgotten about parks and how that impacts all the children, especially children that live in apartments and have housing with no yard. And it just seems like if they're allowing condition, training and conditioning for no-contact youth sports, you know, I just, just keep asking whenever you have an opportunity about parks. And then the other question, I did send Tiffany Morris programs about outdoor classrooms, but, and she thought it was interesting, but is there any indication that the schools, while the weather's so nice, could reopen meetings, certain conditions, such as having an instruction outdoors?
Yeah, I think they, I think they could. I think they'd still have to apply for the waiver. I think the waiver required for any in-person instruction, whether, like regardless of the location was my understanding. But that's actually, we're, we're going to get to it on a different level when we're talking about the rec and the, and the business programs we're launching. Is the one, one blessing we do have at Ojai that, you know, you try to imagine how some areas are going to handle this, but Ojai, we do have really good weather year-round where we have, we have this luxury. I don't know how somewhere with snow is going to, you know, have businesses open in January, for example, if, if this is still going on, so.
Oh, sorry. I went by the Presbyterian Church Sunday morning and they were all sitting underneath the trees far apart and it looked great.
Yep. We've, everybody, all the churches we've talked to have said they're going to do the outdoors for now, and it seems like people are happy with it for, for now, so.
Early in the morning, it's so nice.
Yep, yep.
Okay, does that conclude your?
We have a couple more slides.
Voice out there?
Yeah.
Bill Warwick had a question for James.
Yeah, come on, Bill.
James, James, real quick, you know, I'm still remain confused. I thought the state had announced that they were going to drop the essential versus nonessential categorization and just go on a basic risk evaluation basis. And yet they brought that language back in, I think very problematical language back into the office function. I, I remain confused about the, sort of the, the descriptive integrity of what exactly is going on here because you know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, yeah, it's a mixed message for sure. I think for us, you know, our interpretation of that here at the city is they've, they've said, for example, that government offices are essential. You know, and so we, we can be open for an office, but you know, maybe a, you know, a, a real estate office or, you know, a corporate office, you know, people should be working from home is, is what they're saying, you know, but, but you're right, that they, they said they weren't going to go with the central, nonessential anymore, and it keeps kind of sneaking back into their.
Kind of creeping back in. You know, you can look at a range of risks associated with different types of office configurations.
Yep.
You know, and some are not, not very at all, and in some that are, what unquote, essential are very risky.
Yep.
So, okay.
Okay, tomorrow, tomorrow at the elected officers briefing, or the sheriff does, Bill, I think you submitted questions in the past, that's a good one to submit. Borrowing to see if we can get a better. Okay, James, is that all you have on that?
Couple, couple more. I'll keep it quick and brief, though. We just wanted to give the information on the, that testing site at the fairgrounds again, because they're saying that there's no lines and that they aren't seeing the crowds they expected, so, which is good, but. So no, no appointment or insurance is needed. It's open Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. There's some additional drive-up testing options. And then it happened while we were dark for recess, but we had, and, and, you know, the council had advocated for testing here in Ojai, and we worked with the county and got some testing dates with Ojai. So we, we had those two testing dates and we've reached out recently to see when the plan is to come back. So we'll keep on that, but for now, the county is asking us to remind people to use the fairgrounds.
What, what is the turnaround time on the results?
You know, we've heard some mixed results. It was supposed to be within, I think it was within seven days at that one. It wasn't as quick as we were hoping, and we've, we've gotten some calls from people who hadn't gotten results in that time period, and we got them in contact with the right people at the county. But we've heard that they had some challenges, and there was also, you know, obviously long lines too, which was a, a challenge.
Randy, you have had some experience with the tests.
Mayor, the best, the best results were here in town at the Ojai Community Hospital. We got our results back within 24 hours, actually less than that. And I've been through the auctionard plant, is what I'll call it, but I've been there a couple of times, there five to seven days. And the drive-through in Ventura was almost two weeks.
What is the cost at the hospital?
None, there was no cost at any of them.
Oh, really? Okay. Hey, that's a good word to get out to the locals.
Well, I think what happened, I, I kind of got in on, I think, on an emergency moment, you know, lack for a better term, at the Ojai Valley Community Hospital. And, and so I think it was rare that I was allowed to be tested there. They're generally saving their tests for, for real emergencies and for staff.
Symptomatic too.
Oh, okay, so not readily available, but it seems that testing is not going to be really effective if they can't get it down to at least within 24 hours, probably even shorter than that. Rightly for the kids going back to school. Okay, anything else on this topic?
Yeah, the, I think this is the last slide. We just wanted to give an update on, we have a bunch of programs in place. We use the opportunity to remind people in case they haven't heard, but also, also just as a status report, we've started to get more questions because people are talking about it at the state level as well, but about the residential and commercial eviction moratoriums. We've said this a couple of times, but as a reminder, here in Ojai, we wrote those to go, to remain in place through the existence of the emergency. So a lot of cities in, in the state, I think, had put expiration dates on them that are now approaching. Here in Ojai, ours is in place still, and copies are available on the ojaicity.org COVID page. The face covering, we're getting a lot more questions about this now, about whether face covering requirements are in place. And they are in place, and we also have code enforcement on the weekends, going out and handing out informational flyers, reminding people that they see not wearing them, asking them to put them back on. And we have the signage as people come into town, as visitors come in on the weekends, reminding everybody to wear face, face covering. So we're, we're trying to get the word out on that still. We have issued 15 permits to the businesses and restaurants for outdoors, expanded outdoor space. We have issued fifteen permits to the businesses and restaurants for outdoors, expanded outdoor space, which I think is actually, you know, fifteen was more than we were expecting. I think that's a good ratio for how many businesses we have. So we have fifteen permits now. We're working on one pending one, which is going to be kind of an interesting one where we're looking at utilizing a couple of parking spaces to do it. So we're working on that now. And then lastly, our outdoor exercise program. We had the Parks and Rec Commission meeting last week and they had said that they heard from a couple of instructors that the fee was, was a little too high for them to handle at this point. We had started with a reduced fee of twenty dollars per class. But we've got a good system down where it doesn't take much staff time. So we worked with the commission to reduce that to twenty dollars per week. And we saw really good response to that last week. A lot of the instructors were excited and adding more classes in that, you know, before they had had four students in a class, it wasn't worth it because the cost. But now they're able to add those classes in. So we saw a, an increase in those classes and so far it's been really good. We haven't had any incidences or, you know, challenges with it. We have yoga, yoga, we have some martial arts and I, I put in there solo, by that I mean it's non-contact martial arts. And we did a rattlesnake avoidance training for dogs and a couple of other things. So we're, we're trying to launch them. And then next month, I think the big one for us will be, we've figured out a way to do distanced individual gymnastics drills where it'll be outdoors, you know, distanced and everything. And that one, we think there will be a big demand for. So. So we keep, you know, keep trying to launch them. It's obviously challenging times, but we're seeing good response and, and, and we're trying to keep, stay creative in ways that we can provide some options for businesses and residents.
I have a question for you on the outdoor exercise, I think it's an outdoor exercise.
Yes.
We have some kind of a permit there to have some exercise on one of the tennis courts with music?
So we have several permits there. We can make sure. We've had a, we've had a couple of people who, who operated the classes and then we found out and they didn't have permits. And so we've worked with them to get permitted. So we're const, we're, we're actively having people go out every couple of days and make sure that the classes that are supposed to be there are there. And the main thing, the main thing for us is we want to make sure they have the protocols in place for social distancing. And we want to make sure they have insurance to protect all of us. So those are the, really the two reasons we're pushing that.
Reason I raise the question is that there have been several evenings when I've been down in the downtown area. I don't know how it is out on the boulevard, but on the bike path or walking through the park, the music is amplified or turned way up. I didn't know that was necessary to get the exercise. But something worth mentioning to them because.
Yeah, we were, we require them to explain that, what, like whether they're going to use amplified music and how they're going to do it. So we'll make sure that if they have a permit, they're complying and if not, we'll, we'll get them up to speed.
Okay, is anything else for James on this one? Not hearing any. Okay, let's go to Randy. Well, yeah, I guess Randy. Item number four, the resolution on racial injustice and policing as well as just general behavior in town.
Well, Mary, I know you called on me, but I'd rather, I, I think James is, has, has the floor. Let's let him shine. And I think we've all read it and I think we're all in agreement with it, but let's let James, James.
I could, I could give a very brief report is, and you know, essentially we, at our last council meeting, we had the update on police services and the city council requested that we return at the upcoming meeting with the resolution standing against racial injustice. So we, you know, staff researched, found, you know, several other resolutions that cities have done and took those and we really then kind of, you know, tried to, to write one that we thought matched the, you know, the principles that we have here in Ojai. So that's the resolution that we brought forward that's in the packet. And we're presenting that for council adoption tonight. So.
Okay, any questions for the city manager? We have a motion?
I think it's very well written and move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. And it did get to the essence of what the discussion was in that moment. And thank you, James.
Okay. Heard the discussion? If not, do we need roll call on a resolution or can we do it by acclamation?
Acclamation would be okay as there's no money on this resolution.
Okay. Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution? If not, it passes unanimously. Thanks very much to the staff for putting that together for us. Okay, we are now on.
Mayor, can I interrupt real quick? I, this deputy clerk just informed me that we do have one speaker on the coronavirus item. It's Marcy Tasher.
Oh, can we, okay, we'll go back to that then. Yeah, fine.
Yeah. And I, and I don't know, Marcy, if you can hear us. I see her cameras on, but the audio is off.
Marcy, can you hear us? If you can, you're, you're on deck.
I see Christine has joined us.
Am I on? I don't see myself. Can you hear me?
Here you go. We don't see you. Okay, well, we could always come back around and when Marcy comes back on, we didn't take any action on that.
Marcy is muted.
Yeah, she had put in for that item.
I don't think that Marcy knew she was going to be asked to do anything other than the presentation.
Okay, all right, cool. All right, we might, yeah, we may have just, maybe we checked the wrong box when, when we signed up. So.
Anybody else out there that'd like to speak on item number three? If not, okay, item number four has passed unanimously. We're now on discussion item number five.
And.
The postal, postal service. I was the one that requested to put this on the agenda and I had asked the city manager, there's one declaration that I would hope we could add to this, which is that the postal equipment that was removed be restored. Not that it necessarily will get restored, but I think that in the interest of our community, we should at least ask for it. And I will so move. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion is now open. Bill?
Question?
Yep.
Just on general principle, you know, I'm kind of a stickler for certain things, like when there's a statement in a resolution knowing exactly what it refers to. I have to admit, I'm pleading ignorance. I'm not sure exactly what section three refers to on the urging the US Congress to pass legislation approving twenty-five billion dollars in aid to the USPS. What exactly, is that the House version that passed? Is that what that is?
Yeah, I, I believe it was the House version that passed. We wrote this the day that it passed, which I think was Friday or Thursday of last week. So that's what we were referring to. Yeah, it's the postal service funding bill. But the House.
So that, that is the postal service funding bill?
Yes.
Okay. In order to be precise, should we maybe consider instead of saying approving twenty-five billion, say approving the postal service funding bill?
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's a couple billion amongst friends?
Well, I just, to be specific about we're actually.
I agree with you, Bill.
Okay.
When you think of the kind of money that's been scattered around, that's not a bad place to put it, even a couple of billion amongst friends. So. We'll see. Other, any other questions? Okay, this isn't spending money, but it's talking about money. Do we need a, Matt, do we need a roll call or can we do this by acclamation?
This too would be okay by acclamation.
Okay. Is there any objection? Not hearing any? Okay, the resolution passes by acclamation. Okay, guys, we're now on item number six. And I have two cards after the staff makes the introduction of the item. I have Bill Miley and Christine Golden that would like to comment, and this is on the mural. James, would you like to start?
Yes, please. Just briefly on, at the September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen city council meeting, which is crazy, that was almost a year ago. But the September twenty-fourth council meeting, the city council received a mural term sheet that had been drafted by the Arts Commission and received that term sheet and directed staff to draft an ordinance and work with the Arts Commission to return at a future meeting for adoption. So we are here now somehow eleven months later with that ordinance. And we have worked with the Arts Commission and, and had discussed this item at several commission meetings. I think upfront, I wanted to point out, because it's always been a question that we've been asked. Currently, the city code does not include any regulation of murals directly. And so it regulates painted wall signs, but focuses on the term signs and, and text and things like that. So it doesn't regulate, it doesn't appear to regulate mural, artistic murals in any way. And so the conversation came up about a year ago with, if a resident came to City Hall today and asked if they could paint a mural on private commercial property, under the existing code, what could the city do about it? And, you know, under the current code, there's not much that we can do about it. And so, so that's how this item started. We worked with the Arts Commission to develop the term sheet and ordinance to try to provide some city review of ordinance, of, of murals. We based it on the Ventura County ordinance and Riverside mural ordinances. And then we took those and worked with them, worked with the commission to kind of fine tune it for Ojai. The ordinance attached is what was developed, which created a process for a property owner to submit an application for review by a public art jury. And the public art jury would then be able to approve or deny based on the findings identified in the ordinance, which include, you know, a few things such as whether the artist is qualified, whether the art and architecture are appropriate, whether materials are appropriate and some other findings. It also establishes some processes just to modify or remove murals as needed or for maintenance and upkeep of murals. And the, the chair of the Public Art Committee, Christine Golden, is also on this Zoom meeting. She was one of the Arts Commissioners who spearheaded this project, and so she's also available for any questions.
Okay.
Wish we could, I wish we could see Christine's inspiring visage.
I don't know why you can't see me. Is there some little trick I can do here?
There might be.
Click video.
Yeah, there might be a little video button.
Lower left.
Where would I find that video?
Next to mute, next to.
Bottom left, next to mute. It'll say like, stop video or start video.
Start video. Here we go. There I am.
There you are. You're beautiful.
Okay, I was watching Melania Trump on YouTube while you guys were doing everything else. So I had it on. Sorry.
I have a question, James. I ask it. On the recommendation, it says introduce, you know, at the top of the first page, introduce an ordinance regulating the placement of public murals on private comma, commercial buildings. Now, you're not, what you, don't you mean private commercial buildings? You're not talking about private homes?
No, you're right. Yeah, we can, I, I think you're right. It would be clearer to remove that comma. And it's, when we say public murals, we're talking about murals visible from the public right of way, essentially. Murals visible by the public that have been placed on private commercial buildings.
Okay, but someone can put, put a mural in their backyard, you know, where nobody, the public doesn't see it.
Or inside their house, you know. In fact, the proposed ordinance does not regulate conduct or artistic murals on any residential property outright.
Right.
Mayor Johnston, I had a question. Christine, I think this is a question for you or maybe everyone. General principle, general principle, we usually see embedded in our code is that commission decisions are not necessarily totally final. There's usually an appeal process to counsel embedded in the code. And I noticed that in this case, there is no appeal process available for the decision of the public art jury.
Okay, Matt, you had your hand up.
Is that a question?
Sorry about that. No, actually, Christine, let me jump ahead of you on that one.
Please, please, Joe.
The recommendation from the Arts Commission here is not to have a particular appeal process in the mural ordinance, but rather to rely on the existing general appeal process in, and I'm clicking to get to the right citation. In chapter four of title one of the code, it provides that if something isn't otherwise appealable elsewhere in the code, then there can be an appeal to a city council with some process as provided in that section. So Arts Commission. Still be appealable to council.
Isn't it confusing if, if the language stays the way it is? Where a person reading this, it says for final approval or denial?
Yeah.
We could certainly add a reference to that appeal process to, to solve that clarification, solve that possible notice issue.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Well, how would they know it if it wasn't printed somewhere in this ordinance?
Right.
Yeah, good catch, Joe.
Thank you, Randy.
I have other questions, but I'll take my turn.
Yeah, I would suggest that we, we add that to section for.
Four dash sixteen point three oh four.
Yes.
Three oh four, public meeting.
Arts Commission's decisions are subject to appeal as provided in chapter four of title one.
Randy, you had your hand up.
I just had, again, I, are we, I'm not sure the role that Christine is playing here. Are we talking to Matt and James or you know, do our questions go to, to who? That's, I guess, my concern. We also have Bill Miley sitting on the sidelines that wanted to speak too. The public.
Both under public comment, but in this case, it's a dual role for Christine being on the Arts Commission, if you wish to ask her questions, of course.
I, I just wanted to, to know the format a little better. So the question I have is property rights when property is sold. I purchased a commercial building and I don't want the mural. What's the process for removing the mural? And, and, and do I have to even ask to remove a mural that's on my property?
Well, I think there are some rights of the artist, aren't there?
So the, the ordinance sets up a process where it's section four dash sixteen point three oh eight where murals may not be modified, altered, relocated or removed without prior review of the Arts Commission. So as proposed, it would have to be reviewed by the Arts Commission. And the other piece there is that if the person who installed the mural or paid for its installation did not secure a waiver from the artist of their artist's rights under the state California Art Preservation Act and the Federal Visual Artist Rights Act, then the artist consent might be required. In a nutshell, those two laws provide that an artist has a right for their art, even after it's been delivered and installed, to not be altered or modified in a way that defeats their original vision, subject to some exceptions. Most people who pay for large scale murals buy out a waiver of those rights from the artist to solve the problem permanently. This ordinance does not require a buyout for a mural, leaving the choice to the property owner. So if, if a person was to buy land or a building subject to a mural's artist's rights, they would be wise to ask the seller whether those waiver, whether those rights have been purchased or not, or will have to deal with the artist.
Mayor, a question on that point.
Yes, Bill.
That certainly at least makes some sense from a voluntary point of view for new murals. Section four dash sixteen point three oh nine talks about protecting existing murals where this ordinance if passed would impose a liability on private property owners if they have an existing mural that they, they did not voluntarily enter into. You see what I'm saying? Is that the intent? That we would, there's a difference here between a property owner says that voluntarily, they want to go through this process. And if there's an existing mural, this ordinance passes, then there's no opt out for that existing property owner that I see in there. They didn't want to voluntarily participate.
My recollection from the Arts Commission's discussion, and of course, I know Christine's on the call, so she can add or modify this, but was it that section focused on existing murals was more, the intent behind that was to, the, let me back up and say that we had a, a resident who had an existing mural, or a business owner who had an existing mural, and they had been told several years back when they came to the city that there was no process for them to, to be able to maintain or repair or repaint the mural. And so the section on existing murals was added with more of a focus on having a process for people to be able to repair or, you know, maintain existing murals. So I don't know that their focus, when they talked about that, was on.
Because the way, the way it reads
Yeah.
is that they could be, it could be declared a public nuisance and they would have to repair or remove it at the owner's expense. In other words, a liability that that imposed on them that they did not voluntarily enter into.
Yeah, I think that's true. And I, I'm not sure, I don't know that that was the intent behind it, but I guess, you know, Christine, if you're on the meeting still, maybe you could speak.
I'm, I'm still here and I'm just kind of listening and trying to figure out what, I'm, I'm not really clear, Bill, on what, what your point is. Would you say it again for, for me?
I think Bill's point, if I could jump in on a suggestion, is that a mural that exists today, if this ordinance moves forward on a commercial building, does it require permission of this, of the Arts Commission to be, and City Council upon appeal to be removed or not? As presently word of the ordinance, by its own text, would require a permit to remove that mural. That may not be something that we, that this council would wish to require. If the intent was to not require existing murals to be subject to the ordinance, then I would recommend that we add six, seven words to section four sixteen three oh eight, which would provide in the first sentence, murals approved under the provisions of this chapter, maybe not be modified, altered, relocated, or removed without prior review of the Arts Commission, which would make it plain that once installed under the chapter, then the chapter applies for the mural's life, but not to something that exists today.
Right.
That's why Matthew makes the big bucks.
May I ask a question of all of you? Is it clear in section four sixteen three oh nine, I will tell you what our intention was, and then you can tell me if, if we got there. Right now, we have murals in the city that are in disrepair and no way to address that. And so section four sixteen three oh nine was written to address murals. For example, there's one on the side of Treasures of Ojai. There's another one on the side of Joe's Quick Stop. And they're completely faded and in disrepair. So did we reach our goal the way we wrote four sixteen three oh nine? Because this has gone through more than one art liaison over time.
My point is, I think, and Matthew explained it very well, I think the whole premise of this ordinance is if a property owner wants to voluntarily enter into this structure, as opposed to it being imposed on them against their will.
And I think the one piece that's as presently proposed would go beyond that, the, beyond the voluntary point, would be this section four sixteen three oh nine regarding the maintenance of existing murals that exist today. Right now, all property owners are required to keep their property habitable or occupiable and not a nuisance. But a faded mural is not currently defined as a public nuisance. This would define a faded or faded or disrepaired mural as a public nuisance, which would apply to existing murals. So those owners would face the choice, repair it, or because it exists now, and if we, if the council were to accept the modification I proposed a moment ago, removal of existing mural would not require a permit, then that property owner could simply paint it over, whitewash it, and that would be that.
Randy?
Jump in here real quick.
Was that Ryan?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I couldn't see him, Randy, because.
No, it's fine.
I support, I'll be very quick. I support it a hundred percent. I think everything that Ms. Golden said is correct. And the reality of this situation is, we, we, I think that murals are okay in Ojai. We support art in Ojai. We have a desire to have murals in Ojai. We already have murals in Ojai. I've been communicating with some people in the public who said this is a thing that's going to kill everything and change everything and do all this, but they didn't realize that there were already some things. If there's one thing we're good at, if nothing else in the city, is making the funnel very, very tight for something that's on the books and is regulated and goes through the bureaucracy of multiple commissions. Nobody is painting anything on a wall in this situation without it going through a lot of Ojai bureaucracy. Nobody's even willing to consider anything else. So I would hate to say no to something that is inspirational, positive, and pro and pro art, especially if the backbone is, it has to go through probably way too much bureaucracy to ever get done. In fact, I'd be willing to say I would prefer there was less bureaucracy for it, because I think this is a real positive. We're an art pro community. We lean forward to these things.
Ryan, turn on your video.
I don't need to.
Okay, well, you said you'd be short and Randy's waiting, so are you?
I was short. Johnny, you should know that.
Yeah, if you're done, okay, Randy.
Well, as I say, I, I don't necessarily disagree with Ryan's comments, but again, I'm just lost on murals in general in the community. Maybe I have the old fashioned look that, I, I don't see the need, I, I don't know what the need form is, but that's just my opinion. So to clarify here is, I never did get an answer on the property being sold. The other thing is, regulation of content. And the third one is, a clear definition of what's public nuisance. It seems to me a lot of this is arbitrary. We're setting up a jury or we're setting up a commission to make decisions. But there's really, there's nothing, there's nothing stated within each of the things I just said of what clarifies. So, so it removes the guessing, and it removes the who do you know? And it removes the, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. We got you. Okay. How about, Sues, we haven't heard from you on this.
My, my, my main concern is that the ordinance clearly protects the art, that if somebody goes to the trouble to make a beautiful mural on the side of a building, that when it's sold, that nobody can just paint it over. I just want to make sure that art is protected. And I, I'm not quite sure what to do if mural fades. To me, that's a different matter. I don't know that the owner is required to, you know, I don't know, Christine, help me out here. In order, you know, I don't think that's a requirement. Murals will fade. And then I don't know, I have to look to the Arts Commission what they want to do about that. I just want to make sure the ordinance protects something.
I'd like to defer to Matt to speak to that.
Happy to. A couple of questions, both from Councilmember Hany and Francina. To take those in order, Councilmember Hany, your question on a mural on property that is sold, I didn't answer that directly, or as best I could. The short answer is, under this proposed ordinance, if the mural existed before the ordinance was adopted, then the property owner who buys it could remove it at will with one exception. They would have to have already obtained a waiver or purchased or secured consent from the artist who installed it, under the federal and state Artist Rights Protection Acts. For, under this ordinance as proposed, if a mural was installed under the ordinance, and then property was sold, and the buyer wanted to remove it, they would need to get consent from both the city and the same artist's rights waiver, buy the waiver or get consent. So I realize that's a conditional answer, but it's a bit dependent on what the situation is, as to how the mural existed. The public nuisance is defined here as a mural that's in disrepair. Disrepair, you're right, is not a defined term, and the council could develop a better definition of that term if desired. Absent a specific definition, we would take it to mean not in the same condition in which it was upon installation. The question that immediately raises is whether the property owner is required to keep it painted, keep it bright, keep it in, in condition. I think the answer would be, absent further definition from the council, yes. We all know that paint fades, but there are color fasteners standards for the paint, and if that was maintained, then that would be fine. But the obligation would be to keep it intact, keep it up, keep the wall or supporting structure upon which it sits up, and otherwise prevent it from being degraded or harmed in character. That would also include removing any graffiti if placed on top of it. That it's not itself part of the art. The next question was, as to protection of the art from Councilmember Francina, again, that depends on, as proposed, whether the mural exists now or would be approved under this ordinance. If it exists now, the same answer as to Councilmember Hany. Anyone could remove it at will, with the caveat being they would need to secure the waiver of the artist's rights, or have previously purchased that waiver. If it would be approved under this ordinance, then it could not be removed absent consent from the city and consent from the artist, or having purchased those rights upfront. And the obvious question is, if, if somebody paints a mural in the dead of night, then we would find them in issue citations, but you can't always undo the past.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes, Bill.
I, along those lines, and again, you know, in deference to bureaucracy and everything, I think it's useful, we're passing legislation to really look into detail, make, think of how it would work, what problems there might be. And in service to that, a question on four dash sixteen point three oh seven, mural inspection and maintenance. Part A, I have a couple of questions. Part A clearly allows for the possibility that a city manager may think is just fine, and the art commissioner says, the art commissioner may determine, no, it's not being maintained, or there's, there's no, built into that is a possibility of a disagreement with not a real hierarchy of who makes that judgment. We could clearly have a difference of judgment, as it says, and/or between the city manager and the Arts Commission, as to whether or not the mural is being maintained properly. That seems like it's a problem that probably shouldn't be built into the ordinance. And then the, and the same thing with inspection. It gives inspection authority to volunteers on a commission and to the city manager equivalently. And I think that could be, maybe needs to be clarified or something, in terms of having a, in a paid, a paid staff person, the city manager, with all of the legal protections embedded in that versus, you know, volunteers that don't have all of that, engaging in inspection procedures. And then, part C then, says the city manager is not involved, in terms of whether or not it's been maintained, it's solely in the, in the hands of the art commission. So you can see what I'm trying to say here, if, if a dispute arises between a city manager and an arts commission, there's not a clear path forward. And I, I think it's some real, I always try to think of the worst case scenarios when I look at these ordinance. Am I making myself sense making any sense?
Yeah, yeah, very good.
Yes.
I'd like to weigh in a little bit here. And I'm not sure whether Randy and I are on the same page, but the first thing that came to my mind, and maybe it's because I'm a Philistine, but what was the need for, in a place like Ojai, where our very environment, the architecture, is the attraction for a place that's enjoyable? I've lived in places that have not been that way, and that a mural maybe does enrich one's enjoyment and the beauty of life. But it seems like this is fraught with all sorts of issues, Matt, there's legal issues. For example, like, right now, if I understood the city manager correctly, is that we don't have anything that says that you can or that you can't. And I assume under those circumstances, depending on the strength of the person who wants to do this, that we are somewhat at the mercy of the property owner and the, their taste, or the artist's taste. So I'm assuming that part of that is what motivated us to say, well, gee, can't we have some regulation on this in order for us not to have something that might be an atrocity? Having spent some time in downtown Los Angeles, I can tell you that, you know, that some of what people call artwork, we might have a different opinion on. And then other things, like you went banky or where, or banky.
Are you saying that this ordinance is that, or it's not that?
Then you can make your observation.
I'm not commenting either way. I'm just curious, like.
Okay, but you're interrupting right now. And then you, whatever you'd like to say. What concerns me is how much authority do we have as a public jurisdiction? Matt, if, if, say, the general community felt that this was not a great idea to encourage more murals, and we wanted to say we're not going to have murals, because, you know, one person's mural might be some other person's sign, would that even be legal? I know that some people say, as long as it's neutral, as long as you apply it equally to everybody, then you can weigh into those things constitutionally. But in this case, would we be doing that? Or could we do that? And if we can't, then maybe the next best thing is trying to find a way to properly regulate it, which is what this is an effort at. But just by all the questions I'm hearing, everybody's got a little concern as to how it would work. And frankly, I think that as a city, we should be careful of not becoming a quasi homeowners' association and telling everybody what to do, and then trying to figure out through the staff afterwards, how it works, because it's a huge amount of effort. And I look at the thing, and I thought, well, that might discourage anybody from ever wanting to paint a mural because of the bureaucracy. On the other hand, once they do it, Sues makes a good point, that if it's really good art, you hate to let somebody else just come and whitewash it. So anyway, Ryan, now it's over to you. You had some.
You made, you made a great point. I apologize for cutting you off. I just, I was trying to make sure that you understood if it was targeted at anyone, or some understanding, like that you were in the same line of where anybody else felt, and I didn't want you to misalign yourself with how I felt about this particular issue, because I was communicated with it about some other people, and it may have been confusing. But I ultimately, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a very, you know, it's a, it's a pure issue in Ojai that, that makes a big difference. It's a, it's a very fifty fifty issue, if I will, I lack of a better term to explain it. But we promote art, and we're an art community, and we want art, and we support art, and art is an important part, and art is this part of the fabric of our culture of Ojai. But the wrong art, the wrong place that's too big and has the wrong words, and maybe doesn't quite agree with everybody is not okay. So we are, frankly, we put ourselves in a position of picking winners and losers, and it's a very tough.
Be the good taste police.
Right, well, yeah. And, and I'm getting a sense from my contacts with people in the public and where everybody is on this, this is one that's very close in what would be acceptable versus not acceptable to everybody. Now, I personally, my personal opinion, but I don't know if that's necessarily carrying the water for the day, because I represent other people, is that we let all of the ideas and all of the different messages and everything else flow through, and they get mixed up in a cauldron, and we pick out what we like or don't like, and somehow we're supposed to, that, that doesn't work perfectly. But the idea in America is that we don't pick and choose winners and losers over ideas. We might pick and choose losers over pictures and colors and materials and all the other things that we tend to do around here. But we're, we, I, you know, I do appreciate that the First Amendment says we do not pick winners and losers over messages.
But we do sometimes. My, my question to the city attorney is, is amongst the choices that we are making here tonight, is, is one of them not to have murals, as Randy was maybe alluding to, and maybe I'm kind of leaning that way, too. I know that that's not great for. As Randy was maybe alluding to, and maybe I'm kind of leaning that way too. I know that that's not great for.
I don't know, I mean, Johnny, in all fairness.
Matt, please.
Thank you. I was waiting for the the opportunity there.
I have something to say about that when Matt's done.
Oh, right. Let me jump in here with a couple of points.
Have a chance to get done.
Thank you. So as I read it, the city does have the power to adopt this kind of an ordinance or this ordinance or something like it that imposes reasonable, content neutral, viewpoint neutral regulations on murals as distinct from signs. Yes, the case law on the distinction between a mural and a sign is a bit muddy. There's no definitive answer, but generally a mural is something with an artistic expression goal as a sign is something with a message expression goal, whether that and we can't discriminate between you know, different types of political messages or different types of commercial messages, although commercial speech is given less protection than political or religious or other non-commercial speech. But we can draw distinctions between signs intended to express a message and something that's purely artistic. However, we have to be careful even on the artistic side that we don't discriminate on the content of the art. To use an extreme example, you know, a mural about lemons and a mural about oranges. If both are the same high quality content, high quality materials, they're structurally sound, they're not lit, they're the right size, the right location. We couldn't draw the line and say one is okay and the other is not.
The essence of the question, Matt, though, is is it possible to say, no, you, we just won't have any more of them?
Yeah, I do think you can prohibit murals entirely. The risk you run is the line between a sign and a mural. Somebody builds a very artistic sign promoting their business, it might be viewed as a sign and not a mural. But you could prohibit murals. I do think you can. Whether to do that is of course a choice for the council.
It's a policy. Wonder what the choices were.
Is where this conversation was, Johnny. I mean, that's what we were talking about. We weren't talking about the content of the speech. We weren't talking about some other stuff. It was just like, hey, are these large picture meal murals okay for Ojai? I was in the I talked about it a bunch. I mean,
Wanting to speak, Ryan.
We'll come back to you, Ryan. Susan had her hand up and Bill has had his hand up.
And Randy has.
I'm sorry, Randy, you're not on the screen right now. Okay, let's start with Susan.
I think it was about twenty five years ago that a wonderful artist Marty Gottesman, so if you may remember, wanted to put a mural on the side of what was then the Chase Brothers, now Joe's Quick Stop. And it would have been absolutely beautiful. She's a very well, you know, her art is is phenomenal. And that's the kind of art I would want to protect, but the council voted no, and it made a lot of people in the community, I think rightfully, very unhappy. So my question is, I I think I heard, I talked to Christine before the meeting. I think they have been working on this for almost three years. And I do trust the the art commission and their their, you know, the whole process. I want to pass this. I just think maybe there's a few, as Bill Wierke pointed out, there's a few things that need clarification, you know, the language that you pointed out. My other question is as I started thinking, and this might be a stupid question, but I have to ask the city attorney, can a mural be defined as not having language?
It is.
Language meaning.
No blur between a mural and a sign. A mural is strictly art without a message, a written message.
And the current ordinance does include the line that murals cannot contain lettering symbols. It's worth noting that there are signs that don't have letters. I mean, we think of some iconic icons that we know that are definitively a sale icon. That's a sign like the classic that was the red, the Target's red double target logo.
Yeah, but this would, so this language is already in there and that would take away the fear of any messages, right?
And not necessarily. I can tell you a number of signs that will send a real clear message. I presume that the art commission wouldn't approve it though. Christine's got her hand up and then I'm going to go to Randy and then I'm going to come to you, Bill. Christine, go.
Thank you, Johnny. Section four sixteen three oh three limitations addresses all of that. And in addition to it very clearly stating that there can be no advertisement, it cannot be commercial, it cannot have any product, business, brand, organization, service. It cannot be about a cause or a place. That's all in this ordinance. In addition to that, a review would be done by a public art jury of that mural. So there are all kinds of safeguards in place. And may I go ahead and say a couple of other things, Johnny, while I've got them, got the floor? Because you should know that you probably don't know that you've got quite a few murals in the city of Ojai, but they're so embedded into the site. They don't they don't stick out like sore thumbs and that's what the job of your arts commission is. It's to make sure that something isn't put up that is jarring. That's the whole purpose of having a public art jury and then you have a whole second wall, which is the arts commission itself, that has to then approve what the public art jury recommends. You've got two places where if a private commercial building owner wanted to put a mural up, it has to go through those steps. And I I almost don't want to tell you that you're about to have two murals in the city that have nothing to do with this ordinance. One of them is coming out of Grants. Grants approved a mural that's going to be going up. And another one, which is going to go up next week, is part of a private development project. And it's a mural that's going on the side of the gas station, which used to be Valero and is now Shell. So murals are happening and people are asking about them. And if you don't have any ordinance, you don't have any control at all, unless like Johnny said, you just say no murals.
Well, I'm just saying that if that's a choice, we should at least know that that's the choice and then consciously maybe reject that choice. Okay.
Didn't mean to go on so long.
I guess the last thing I wanted to say is I think this this purchasing of the artist's rights should have been put someplace in this. I was looking at four sixteen dash three oh three under limitations or I'm sorry, four sixteen three oh two under application. But I would think if if we're going to hold the rights up of a citizen that owns a building to the rights up to the rights of someone who painted on that building prior to them owning it supersedes theirs, then it should be listed somewhere. It I would might even say that it needs to be listed in the deed that when you purchase this building, that if you have a mural on it, that you can't take it down without all of these steps and without the consent of the artist. So I just for me personally, I just think there's just way too much stuff going on. So I'm going to vote no on it, not support it. I I would just sue not have this, not allow murals in Ojai. I just think there's there's just too much gray and there's too much ambu ambiguity and there's just, there's not enough. There's just not enough to make it work for everyone.
Okay, we don't have a motion quite yet, but.
I think it's my turn, Johnny.
What?
I think it's my turn.
Did I already check with Susan? I can't remember.
I I just wanted to say really quickly, I I want to something that Christine has taught me was that the public art ordinance is best implemented and she's been a visionary in doing that along with the rest of the art commission as this commission and that part of our government that that is embedded in that in the commission and the ordinances is a partner with the property owner. Is a partner in terms of getting in a in essence in a a consulting team for the in quality integrity of public art installation. And I think that that's the way I look at this. It's not so much a bureaucratic funnel, that's our goal, as an effective partnership where a property owner, remember this is voluntary, that wants to have help doing something with artistic integrity and inspiration and integrity on their their property, in effect gets a consulting team without having to pay for it through the public art jury process, through the arts commission process. So if they want to do this, remember it's voluntary and we clean up the language, in a in essence, it's a a leveraging of a good motivation by a property owner to be able to really leverage and improve the quality of the of the result, something they would be proud of that adds value to their building. With this procedure, with the help of you know, the public, the the art jury, the public art jury and and the the overall process. So I view it as a resource that if a property owner wants to voluntarily utilize, they are free to do so. And therefore, I I think we ought to look at this more of how to make this work as a productive partnership if a property owner wants to voluntarily enter into this system as opposed to some sort of regulatory restriction approach. In any way, that's how I look at it and that's the motivation why I support this with a cleanup language to make it serve that end better.
Yeah, are we ready for motion?
We have, uh, Bill Miley has joined. Yeah, okay, we'll pull him in.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Bill. Yeah.
Turn on your video.
Uh, I'd like to be able to do that.
Go to the lower left corner where it says mute.
And click start video.
Yeah, right next to it.
How's that?
Bill, you don't look a day over thirty.
Oh, can you actually see me? How about now? No?
Are you clicking start video?
Yeah, I got you. I can see you.
You don't sound like a day over forty, Bill.
Wait a minute, how's that? Okay, well, thank you. I've been listening. Now, for the record, my name is Bill Miley. I've lived on North Signal Street for a long time. I take a different point of view than what you've been expressing. I'm concerned about the quote, community aesthetics, atmosphere of our city now and forever. And beyond the lifetime, my lifetime, which I'm in the eighties, murals must do have their place in a community and a city life, but I believe they're not appropriate for the city of Ojai. I would like the city council to keep this city as it has been, is and will be by placing a prohibition on mural art on public and private buildings on the face of public facing walls. Most of us value highly our value with its mountains, its slopes, its ridge lines and its shapes, its spiritual elements, its historical people and their creations. And the challenges key folks fought to make us what we are now. Mr. Libby especially, he kept the L.A. wood choppers from the Arbolata Oaks by buying the acres. Coming down the Denison Grade One views the panoramic sights of our valley, a vision which can remain in one's mind eye forever. Downtown, we have unique arcade, its neighboring stores, offices, favorite eating places. What actually makes the memories of our cities? Obviously, our experiences and not, excuse me, our views and on occasion little glitches when they happen. I would suggest we not add, not add mural art to these experiences. We have our elements which make up the OJ experience. A prohibition on public wall art, as I understand it, meets the First Amendment. Any other form of attempted control by a city panel will run up against, as I understand it, the First Amendment rights of established artists. They have rights for colors and designs and they can't be denied. What comes to folks' minds when they visit, what comes to folks' minds when they visit our city? The valley, the spiritual atmosphere, the built environment of our arcade, Libby Park, historical buildings, our shops, businesses and our residential areas, plus much else, the flora and fauna. I understand communities can take into consideration two factors when dealing with the First Amendment. These being quote, community aesthetics and quote, and quote, traffic safety, unquote. Therefore, I request the city council seriously consider prohibiting mural art on public and private buildings. I have one more thing to say. I referenced the American Bar Association commentary on murals, which I'm sure Matthew is well familiar with. It clearly says, as I read it, the artist has First Amendment rights on colors, color intensity and designs. And that can't be taken away from the artist. He may, she may let you modify it, but she doesn't have to. And if I was a strong artist and wanted it to do my way, I'd take you to court. Thanks.
Christine?
Yeah, so I will give a wrap up of how I feel about this before you take it to a vote. I I would really like to point out that Ojai has several murals already and that this ordinance is addressing just murals within city limits and just murals on commercial property. There's the Treasures of Ojai mural. There's the Joe's Quick Stop mural. There is a mural that found its way up to the top of the side of the building of the Vine Restaurant without any oversight at all. And thank goodness it's delightful, but that's an example of what happens when you don't have a mural ordinance because what if it wasn't delightful? Then, of course, Bill said something about even public property not having murals. Can you imagine Libby Bowl without the wonderful tile mural of all the children's art? I think you know where that is down by the handicap section of Libby Bowl. That's a clear example of a mural that we have. We have a mural going up as a part of our grants process. It's going to be going on the side of the preschool building at OUSD. Some of you know about that. And as I mentioned before, we have a mural going up on what is now the Shell Station right on Ojai Avenue. And I think you're all going to be blown away when you see what this mural is because a lot of people think the murals are just painted surfaces and they're not. There's all kinds of applications, including tile work. So right now there is nothing to stop private murals being installed on private, on commercial, private buildings. They can just do it. There's no oversight. This mural is really addressing what Bill is talking about. It's a way to give some oversight and to have some control over the process. As far as an artist and the colors and all that, in this process, that's all decided ahead of time. It's all part of the vetting process. We get to see exactly what that mural is going to look like. Neither gets approved or it doesn't get approved. And the artist has a contract and the contract stipulates that they are going to produce what was approved. So you've got all kinds of controls in in place. I hope that you'll pass some kind of mural ordinance because I think otherwise you're really opening yourself up to reacting to what happens when private development decides or private commercial ownership of buildings decides. Let me give you an example. You have a huge big blank wall right across from the post office. It's on the side of the Ojai Theater Building. Right now, they could do anything they want to the side of that building as long as it passes historical preservation guidelines. Wouldn't you prefer to have an ordinance in place that will allow some oversight if they decide they want to put a mural up there? To just, that's just an example of why I think it's really smart that you have something. And yeah, this needs to be tweaked. And I think everybody that talked about ways to tweak this right on, that shouldn't happen. But I do hope that you'll approve it and give me even more work to do. So that's, thank you.
I'm waving my hand. Do you see me?
Saying Susan, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. I want to say something else, you know, an older person, including myself, may see this differently. But let's not forget the children of the community. They, I mean, most, many people will delight in a well-done mirror mural, but the children love murals. They love to stop and look. My little granddaughter loves the panels in the park. We go there all the time. We've looked at those since she was about a year and a half or two years old and we're still looking at them. You know, the ones by the by the bowl as you go toward the tennis court. go toward the tennis court, you know, the, I don't know if you've all seen it, but if you haven't, you should. So I support what Christine said. I hope we can pass this and, you know, do with the, with the right language, you know. That's all I have to say.
Bill, do we have a motion?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to direct, to defer introduction of this ordinance to staff incorporating revisions per discussion tonight.
I'd like to second it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
To direct staff to defer introduction of the ordinance to a point in the future where staff can incorporate the discussion tonight in terms of revisions to the, to this language.
And bring it back?
Yes.
I'll second it again.
A referral back to staff to make some further adjustments. Is that the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to refer the ordinance back to staff to make, I guess, what Christine referred to as tweaks, tweakers.
My motion is to tweak.
Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Any objections to the motion? If not, staff, you got it back in your lap. Okay, thanks, James. Okay, we, we have one more item, and it's.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine, and thank.
I think the next item is also, I have to stay on for that too, or I'd like to.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, okay.
Go forward and tweak, Christine.
And, and thank you, Bill, for staying up and participating. Okay, James.
Thank you. The, the next item was another item we discussed quite a while back, which was, we had had a couple of public art projects that had to come to the city council for approval. And at that time, we talked about modifying the ordinance so that the items, some of the items didn't require so many rounds of approval. And, and I'll get into specifics on that. But there's also a couple of additional kind of cleanup recommendations. So the main one that I mentioned a moment ago is every year when a project comes to, or a developer has a public art requirement, but they don't have a, a location, a suitable location or option to install the art, they can go to a, go before the Public Art Committee and the Arts Commission and request what we call a waiver, which isn't a waiver of the requirement for the art, but it's basically saying that they're going to pay, pay the fee instead of install the art. And so I want to make sure that's clear. We're not waiving anything other than the strict compliance of installing the art. And so each year, we usually get one or two of those projects where the person comes to the Public Art Committee and presents on why they want to pay the fee. You know, usually they don't have an adequate location or something like that. That has to get approved by the Public Art Committee currently, and then it goes forward to the Arts Commission, and then it goes to the city council. So we end up having three separate meetings to approve, you know, payment of the fee rather than installation of art. And so the last time we came forward, we had one from the inn that came to city council in December. And at that time, I think it was December of twenty nineteen, or twenty eighteen, I'm sorry. At that time, it was stated that we should look at reviewing the ordinance and seeing if that could be modified. So that's one of the major changes proposed here is that now, when somebody requests to pay the fee instead of installing the art, it would be approved by the Public Art Committee, approved or denied by the Public Arts Committee, and then by the Arts Commission, but it wouldn't need to come to council for that final approval, which would eliminate, you know, that extra meeting. So, so that's the big change proposed here by this ordinance. There's other cleanup items as well, such as when we create a public art jury, we clarified that if there's no developer on the project, since they won't be the seventh member of the jury, then a, a member of the Arts, or the Arts Commission can select a member rather than have the developer participate, since there isn't one. And the others relate mostly to some of these projects that have been in place for several years because the development was delayed. And we clarified in the, or in the proposed ordinance that the artists won't be penalized by being locked up in these projects that are delayed for years and years. And we, and the Arts Commission proposed adding some language into either have a time limit on that, or, or, yeah, well, basically to add a time limit. So now the, the artists are eligible to do another public art project after three years from the date of the Arts Commission's approval of the project, rather than after the project is complete, which in some cases has dragged on for years and years and years here in Ojai. So with that, that's kind of the, you know, the high level overview of it. I know Christine is still on the, the meeting, I'm sorry, Public Art Chair Golden is on the meeting if there's any additional questions.
Okay, Christine, and you're becoming professional. I noticed you on meeting.
I'm the Zoom queen.
Very well.
Anybody have any questions?
You have any questions to Christine? Christine, do you have any comments you want to make, or?
Randy has a question.
Randy has a question.
Oh, okay.
I'm listening more to James. James, everywhere through this thing, I keep seeing the city council waived and the art commission put in its place. Can you explain that to me?
So the, the main one is the one, again, you know, we, the typical project we've had over the last few years was the, you know, we always have a project typically from the Ojai Valley Inn in December, because that's when they do their remodels. And they have several public art projects. And then when they're doing like room remodels, it doesn't make any sense for us to require public art in their rooms. It doesn't, you know, benefit the public anyway. So the last three or four years, using them as an example, they've come before the Public Art Committee and requested the ability to just pay the fee, you know, instead of installing this art. And so the change that I think you're referring to, it would allow the Public Art Committee and the Arts Commission to accept that fee, and it wouldn't require to, for that item to come back to the city council anymore. And so that is a, it's a choice that the council can make, but the last, we had a special meeting, I think it was December twentieth of twenty eighteen, and it was said at that time, you know, do we really need to have these December meetings for these, you know, to accept a payment essentially? So, so we had, we had proposed the change in response to that, so.
And would that allow the Arts Commission to, the public arts group to take that money in if it accumulates to do something that would be really in the public domain?
Yes, so they, they accept, it doesn't give them the ability to say, you know, they don't have the ability to say that the applicant doesn't have to pay the fee. That's not, you know, what would be proposed. It would be, they have the ability to accept that fee and place it in the public art fund to use for a public art project.
And then it would be up to the, the Arts Commission could choose a project and have enough money to actually do something maybe meaningful rather than just sticking it to some individual who's trying to repair their property.
Correct.
Sounds like a great idea.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that. I'm just, again, I'm, I'm not trying to argue this point. So that money that goes back to the Arts Commission Fund, that's actually money that's, what's, what's the word I'm looking for? That's money that actually belongs to the city and that is over, has oversight by the Arts Commission, but technically has to be, has to be approved by the council. That still stays in place, correct?
No.
But the, the idea to get the deposit to allow the proper, I think the property developer to perceive, the owner to perceive as what they're doing in an expeditious way, and that the money be accepted. I think that the council does have to actually approve the deposit of the money. But, okay, Christine's shaking her head.
Yeah, you're, you're right, Johnny, on the council eventually approves the deposit. I'm sure that happens. But as far as the public art fund goes, expenditures from the public art fund are not approved by city council. They're approved by the Arts Commission.
Matthew has a furrowed brow, Johnny.
Depositing it. And I think we're in accord on that. I think once it gets in that account, then it follows all the rules of the Arts Commission, correct?
And no city money can be spent without city council approval, period. And what, what we've done, possible. What we've done recently is, you know, the Arts Commission rec, you know, states what they want to use the money for. We put a simple consent item on the agenda for council to approve. And so we did that recently with a couple of the projects.
I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that. And then I guess the last thing of a concern.
Randy, before you leave, that, the part of the clarification is, is that money is received, the waiver is given to the property owner, but that is restricted money that is controlled in a certain way and goes through the Arts Commission and to the council for final approval.
Right. And, and the expenditure of those funds are approved by council.
General fund money to do whatever we.
I wanted to be clear on that. And the last thing I have is I've just lost on this. I, I don't know how this works. If there is no developer for the project, a member selected at the discretion of the Arts Commission, someone explain that to me. What does that mean?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm lost on it.
Yeah, I'll let Chair Golden explain that.
Christine? Is that okay, James?
Yeah.
We've, we had a situation where we had to call a public art jury, and please excuse me for the late hour, I can't remember what the project was, but there was no developer. Usually for a project, you have, it's a private developer, and so that one of the jurors is representing the developer. But we had, we had a project and no developer. So we knew we needed to add that caveat to the ordinance to allow us to give that seat to someone else. And it made most sense that it would be at the discretion of the Arts Commission to choose somebody in that seventh, a public art jury has seven members. You have already approved this change, but it was never put into the ordinance. And so it's coming back in this document that we put together. We realized that even though you already approved this, it never got in.
Okay.
The ordinance. We checked and it wasn't there. So we thought you should bring it back.
Randy, okay. Any other questions?
I move approval, Johnny.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussions? If not, this.
I want to ask something. Can I ask something? Sorry. If it was already approved.
It was a policy. It was a policy, not a text amendment, Susan.
It's only, it's only one element of this. There's more than that in this.
Got it, got it, got it.
This takes it from a policy to a text amendment in the code.
Got it. Okay.
We have a motion. It's been seconded, and it is, what's the, is the motion to introduce this?
Yeah, the motion is to follow the recommendations to find the ordinance exempt from SEQA and to introduce the ordinance to modify Article Two per, as stipulated.
Okay, there. Do we need a vote on that one, Matt?
As an ordinance, yes.
Yes. Okay, well, clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney? Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Blatts? Councilmember Blatts?
A or N.
Councilmember Blatts?
You're muted.
Yes, I'm here, yes. Yay. Yay, okay. Yay, yes, in both cases.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. So that then takes us to, what, we're now to reports from the council?
All right. Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, councilmember reports. Randy, you got one? Do you have one?
None.
Everyone's been on vacation.
Okay. Ryan, you have one? Okay, we'll send that. No.
You don't have to go.
Okay, Suzha?
I just want to say that tomorrow morning at eleven o'clock, there'll be another Zoom meeting, community, you know, the Act of Transportation Project meeting is tomorrow at eleven o'clock. It's open to the public. Even if you're new and you want to ask questions, you can attend. There usually been, you know, the meetings have been small. We're basically waiting for the permits from Caltrans to do the demonstration project. So we'll see if we made any progress.
Bill?
Just a quick shout out to both the EDC and our Chamber of Commerce. They've really been stepping up to specific problems and been a resource for James, who desperately needs the help to address issues as they come up, especially with our business community in the face of all this COVID challenge. So it's, I don't want to get into the specifics, but I just want to give them a, give them a commendation. They've really, really been helpful, both the Art Chamber and the EDC.
Okay. The only comment I have, and I mentioned to the city manager earlier, is that, you know, we're in this stage of sort of trying to reopen the town. And in some cases, some of the restrictions and the yellow tape and stuff that gets put up, people are either taking it down or they think the thing has been opened when it hasn't. And so I would encourage staff to kind of keep an eye on. Okay, city managers report.
Just a couple of quick things. And we, we did talk to staff today about getting some of those caution tape and things like those replaced. So we'll, we'll focus on that in the next couple of days. But we, we have our new weekend code enforcement that was approved at the, at the last council meeting. And we just wanted to take a chance to remind everybody, we are actively enforcing the gas-powered equipment prohibition. We are noticing people that are performing weekend construction that, you know, that, that's actually against code and asking them to, to not do that. We haven't cited anybody for that yet, but we're, we're pushing that. We've noticed that the number's gone way down from multiple to just one, two weeks ago and zero this weekend. And then, and so I think people are complying. They just didn't know about it. And then we are doing active short-term rental enforcement. And between the gas-powered and equipment and the short-term rentals, not that, you know, this is something, you know, people will be excited about, but we've, we've issued multiple citations in the last couple of weeks. So, you know, this is a good reminder to everybody, if you're using gas-powered landscaping equipment, or if you're operating a short-term rental, that the city is looking, looking for those right now. And so we have that. And the last thing real quick is that we, we recently did a survey on Ojai Day and asked vendors if they are going to be interested and able to conduct Ojai Day this year. And we'll put this on a future agenda, but so far we are not hearing much reply from any of our vendors due to the challenges. So we'll, we'll agenda this for a future meeting, but we, we just kind of wanted to mention it and then let people know if they are, if they're, if there's any vendors watching this and they're interested, we, you know, we need to hear back from you to, to be able to make something happen.
Suzha has a question for you.
James, I've been thinking about this. If we have to cancel Ojai Day, could we still keep the permit for closing Ojai Avenue so that on that day, we can have a car-free day without any vendors or anything? Because we managed to do it all the years past, and I think the public would really enjoy that and the restaurants would enjoy it.
I was gonna, I was gonna propose that we bring an item at the next meeting to kind of brainstorm, or, you know, maybe brainstorm's not the right word, but, you know, maybe staff can bring a couple of ideas and then how it would work, and then we can, we can kick them around at the council meeting. But we, we had, we had thought that we've, kind of shifted to focusing on a local Ojai Day, but it's just with all the challenges. At first, that got a good response, but recently we are not getting people to commit to it. So, and, and, you know, we understand.
I'm just saying that every year we get a permit to close Ojai Avenue for X number of hours.
Yep.
Why not, if, if the rest of the council is in agreement, why not at least have Why not, uh, if, if the rest of the council is in agreement, why not at least have that? And, and, and Ojai, you know, they encourage people to walk and get out, ride their bikes and just make it a, that kind of a community day, nothing commercial. And um, and just the feeling was always so nice to have no cars on that block between the arcade and the park. It was just great. So.
I agree, Suzha.
I agree with Suzha as well.
Okay, well, we'll explore that and we'll bring an item back to, to work that out.
And just really quick, I really want to commend you, James, for the way you've handled our change of code enforcement contracting and practices.
Thank you.
It's like a breath of fresh air, uh, much more professional, much more community engaged, and thank you very much.
Thank you. We, the last thing I'll say to that is we, we uh gave, we have flyers on a bunch of different topics. And so we, we're trying the strategy the first couple of months of just going out every weekend and giving people information on, on things that, you know, we haven't done before. So, so we're, we're getting good response. So that, that's all I have.
Okay, we, future items. Anybody have something they want to put on the agenda that uh the council agrees to?
I do.
Suzha?
Okay, I would like, um, if possible, the next meeting, uh, small cell regulations. If you've been following that, that there was an inquiry from the city, right, James? You can help me out.
Yeah.
Um, and Matt Summers recommended that we put on, put it on the agenda. If you saw the, I don't know if everyone, everyone received it, but there were.
You buy Portland then?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, okay. Do you have an opinion?
Yeah, I think Matt, uh, if the city attorney, uh, if, uh, I think we'll be prepared to have it on the next meeting.
What is this?
This would be to amend the Small Cells Regulation Resolution that was adopted uh last summer to uh expand back some of the aesthetic protections based on a recent ruling by the Ninth Circuit saying we can do so. And we should be able to get that for your next meeting, uh, as the changes are important, but not, not that much text.
Okay, so the direction is, is to get it on the agenda as early as, as you're reasonable for the staff to get it prepared, okay?
Okay, yeah, the next one, the one after, sure.
Okay, any, any other items to the agenda?
I also want to ask again, James. Can I still continue? Um, the, the report of, on the proposed removal of six hundred and eighty trees. And I, I, it starts in the fall and it's going to go on until the spring of twenty twenty-four. But could the public, I, I, and I, and myself fully understand the pros and cons of that? Because, you know, I understand about the water and the fire, but there's also the issue of, of climate mitigation. And I think the public needs a, a comprehensive report.
Okay, that's the uh, the Stewart Canyon in base.
Yeah, that's, it's a mile long.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have a, a, a report we had already, we had done, so we can, um, we can bring it back. Um, if uh, yeah, we can, we can bring it back if council is, you know, requests that, so.
Okay, but, but does the council want to uh bring that back?
There've been several letters to the editor protesting this. The public doesn't quite understand it. And I, I would like to hear the report again before any work starts, you know, as to exact.
Well, I see what, James, why don't you send Suzha the report and then we can talk about, you know, the, the next meeting or the meeting after if the council wants to revisit that. Bill, did you have your hand up on that subject or another?
No, I had a, I had one other question that occurred to me for the city manager, real quick.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, James, one of the key aspects of the demonstration project for ATP is to have the sensors in place before the demonstration project is deployed for a full four weeks. That's what was promised. Uh, at one public meeting that I participated in.
Yeah.
Uh, do we have a start date and will the sensors be in place the full four weeks for the pre-demonstration project installation data collection?
Yeah, we will, we will make sure that they're in place four weeks before. We don't have a start date yet. What I'll do is we'll get a start date, we'll send that up to council, but we'll also post that on our website. Uh, that, that, you know, when the sensors will be placed and we'll announce that on our.
Yeah, because I, I think that's extremely important.
Yeah.
Uh, for the, the whole purpose of the demonstration project is to have a, uh, you know, a treatment effect, which means we've got to have a baseline properly documented. I don't want us to lose that baseline. It's important.
The only problem with that, Bill, is there's not a true baseline in the community right now. Um.
Well, it's, it's the only baseline we have, Randy.
It's a baseline, um, that's not going to be accurate, but you can do it.
It is, it's part of the project contract. I just want to make sure it gets done.
Yeah, well, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll announce that um on our website too for the, for the public. That's a, that's a hot topic as we all know, so.
And, and it would be good, you could ask that kind of question at, at the meetings. There's, we're still holding the bi-weekly meetings and they have data from last summer as well. You know, I'm not, they, they can, they can address the concerns that can, you know, if you have concerns about that, the um the, what do you call them? The consultants?
Yeah, they, they're, we're having the, what is it, number eight? I think we're having Advisory Committee, our Community Committee, meeting number eight tomorrow at, at eleven o'clock.
Um, is the, is the agenda real crowded for next time?
Uh, we, we can move some items around. We have, we had a, we had a, we had four or five we were working on, but we can, you know, we can prioritize them if uh, if council requests an item.
Okay, we.
I'm not done. I'm sorry. Um.
Send the brainstorming session. If you have an item to propose, propose it.
I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait and request it next meeting. Yeah.
Anybody else have something they want to propose? If not, thank you all. You've been a great audience. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.